What am I doing there?
And just like that, we're back.
There you go. Sorry if I got a little hot, but. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Looking out for your work, Kevin.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mine too, Joe. Thank you.
You're welcome, Jessica. I grew up in that end of town, you know, and so did my wife.
Joe, but I think they were good questions because I remember asking some of those same questions about liability. And I was told the lawyers will sort it out.
Right.
But that playground is used quite a bit, not just by the community, but concern for youth. They use the gym at Bryant.
It's the only space on the east side of town, Jumbo.
I know. I know. It's a lunch site. It is kind of really an integral part and don't know how. I'm not sure what kind of arrangement they make with their liability insurance company to.
That's not an issue, trust me.
Well, Jim, Jim, so Jim, so you understand like with concern for youth. You list, we take your insurance. I mean, we, your liability is something that we ask for when anyone uses our facility. And I think, I think the insurance carrier might be the solution, might be the path through this that. You know, after, after Joe asked the question, Andrew and I were kind of messaging back and forth and just kind of problem solving. You know, kind of offline a little bit about what, what other mechanisms might be, and it really comes down to, you know, owning the liability. And I think between conversations that Andrew and I have, and also with, with John from the city. I think those might be things we can, we can problem solve together. And I think that's just, just being able to understand that and clarify. And I think the challenge, I know, I know, Joe, you wanted an answer then, and I appreciate that, kind of looking for the community. But I, I think it's, I think it's solvable. We just need to work through from the correct angle.
Jeremy, I'm certainly not against the project, but I want the project done right. And I can remember years ago, I've been on the, I've been working for the city for many years. Sue Gray came to the common council meetings and sold some building project. And she assured, assured the city that we're, the city was going to have rights to some fitness center at the high school, which never materialized. And there's, there's a lot of kids down at that end of town and they got no place to go.
Yep.
Do you agree, Jessica?
I 100% agree. Even people that come to visit, see my house, my friends with kids come over, we hang out the playground. I look at that playground out my window and these children at the playground and at the field, the softball kids practice there. Basketball kids use the gym. It's definitely an integral part of this neighborhood over here.
And Jeremy?
Yep.
You know, eventually, you know, that's not zoned for the project they want to do. And eventually they're going to have to come to the city to get some sort of either a variance or zoning change. And I'm not so sure how some of these auditors are going to feel if there's not assurances put in place. Regarding that playground.
Joe, I think we can work through those details. I don't think that's, you know, of all the different issues out there. I think playground or the use of the playground is probably one of the simpler ones to solve. It's just a matter of, you know, we don't need to do it in the next 30 seconds.
No, I know that. I know that. I know that.
And I can, Andy can, you know, kind of sit down and, you know, hash out or figure out. But, but no, I do appreciate the advocacy though, because it is needed. There's a lot of kids over that way that. You know, that not only are accustomed to using it, but you know, rely on especially during the summer months.
And they're poor kids, that's the poorer side of town. They have no other place to go. They don't go to the lake. They don't go to camp.
Trust me, Joe, I appreciate your diligence on that. I had multiple questions myself. I didn't know how to chime in and ask questions. So, Joe, I appreciate you asking yours.
Thank you.
Hey, John, I don't want to belabor the point, but will there be? An attempt to kind of? Have something for the community to go to besides like this public hearing that people could go and? Hear what the school has to say about the project, what the developers have to say and be able to raise questions, concerns or issues?
Well, Jim, I mean, that was kind of the point tonight to be able to provide the forum where people could, you know, ask their questions directly. And, and have that, you know, back and forth dialogue that we, that we, you know, can't do in person, you know, some of the, most of the town halls that I've done in the past. Have, you know, been at the American Legion or, you know, VFW and we have, you know, that big audience and we have, you know, two hours where we can do that. So, you know, right now because of COVID, other than doing this, I, you know, I don't really know. I mean, you know, the Jeremy and the school district, you know, if they, if they want to do more outreach, the, you know, they're obviously more welcome to.
Yeah, John, you know, we, we had every intention of having community forums to be able to open and have some dialogue. And, and John, I really appreciate you, you putting this out there as, is, is, is an opportunity to kind of get things out there. Especially as we've had a lot of conversation within the community. So, you know, we, we fully intend to have more opportunities. Especially as questions arise, hopefully through our messaging, we're going to be able to put out, you know, responses and things that are helpful. But I fully anticipate more questions being out there, especially as this evolves and, and we get closer to that finish line. So, yeah, the short answer is yes.
Okay. Missy, are we waiting on anyone to log on? We have everyone? Missy, you're muted. Missy?
I'm talking and you can't hear me? No, it looks like. We've got. Members here, obviously Pelch is here, Ellen is here, Michelle, Ted Murray, Mr. Ploddy. Yeah, Tim Curly, Andrew, yep.
All right, we'll get, get right at it then. This meeting of the common council is called to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Monticello. Brown.
Here.
Allison.
Here.
Argentieri.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Cleveland.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
passage.
Here.
Shinnabarger.
Here.
Carbone.
Here.
Thank you. Well, we just came off from the virtual town hall. And I think most of the council members were in attendance, but. If, if there's any more questions, we'll kind of get those out of the way now. So I don't want to keep, you know, Jeremy and Andy and Tim all night. So we'll, you'll just, if there's any follow-up questions, we'll ask those now and then we'll, you know, kind of let them get on with their night if that's all right.
I have a question, mayor, if I could.
Go ahead, Jeff.
And this is more for us as a city, and I understand we're, we're improving housing and increasing housing. And, and I don't get the balance between increasing housing and having less school space, but I'll leave that to some of the professionals and figure it out later. I'm more concerned about, and there was a comment in there, and I kind of get it that this is going to be some better housing for people than some landlords that maybe not have. I just see an increase of zombie properties in town as we increase other housing for people. And then these old homes just seem to sit and rot. And I just see that as a future down the road.
Well, yeah, I, I don't know about that. I mean, I think, you know, the traditional standalone house is always going to be in demand. You know, you can have all the housing projects in the world, you know, the Park Groves, the Bassett's, the Reedmans. You know, there's always going to be, you know, a large segment that wants their own house with their own yard, their own driveway and all that. You know, whether it's, you know, it might be an apartment now and converted, converting it back to a single family. You know, we're seeing that, you know, up in my neighborhood, there's a house up on the corner that's a, you know, a two-family apartment. It's in the process of being converted back. So, you know, if you look at, if you look at housing prices. You know, the housing market here in Hornell, you know, it's been steadily increasing and continues to do so. You know, some, some of the prices these houses are going for, or, you know, if you would have asked me five, 10 years ago, I would have said, you're crazy. So I, I think, you know, yeah, so will there be a challenge or potentially? Sure. But I, I think, you know, we can work through those and there's always, you know, if there's a buyer, there's always, or if there's a seller, there's always going to be a buyer. And, you know, I think Hornell, you know, is definitely on a growth trajectory and, and let's face it, you know, you know, and I don't want to speak for Andy. But, you know, the Andy Bodewees's of the world and, and the, you know, the David Reedmans, they're not just throwing darts at, at the map and say, well, hey, how about Hornell? Let's, let's go there. I mean, you know, there's, there's reasons behind that. I think that all kind of ties in together. You know, as far as Andy's project, you know, I, I think we've got a lot of the high-end stuff, right? You know, what Andy's doing over at the Rockland Silk Mill and, you know, Reedman up on the hill and Bassett. And they're, you know, they're going to be getting underway with stage two and three. And we have all that high-end. You know, the high-end market kind of taken care of, but I, I think, you know, that niche need right now is that working family that, you know, that, that blue collar. You know, that blue collar housing. And I, and I think that's where Park Grove really comes in. And, you know, and it's not the Bryant School just came onto market and hey, let's go look at it, you know, Park Grove's been here. You know, obviously they've been working towards the Marion Enroll Project for quite some time. But they, as we talked about earlier, they've also been looking at Shawman and, and other places as, you know, potential sites to develop. So, you know, I, I think this is kind of a case where the stars are aligning for us. But again, I think just having these conversations can, can do nothing but, but help the cause.
Okay, we'll see how that works for us.
Well, John, I think that it's a good project, to be quite honest with you, with proper study. But I think it's needed that, that price range is needed in Hornell.
I agree.
I do too. And, you know, and I just want to say one other thing, you know, if, if there were a bunch of people coming to, you know, look around at, at the Bryant School. We're lucky to have an Andy Bodewees and a Park Grove that's interested because you want to have quality people, quality builders. That are going to take pride in it and do the project right and see it through and then maintain it. You know, they're not just going to build it and run away and hey, you know, thanks for everything and, you know, good luck to, to all of you. I mean, they're going to be here. They're going to maintain a presence here. They're invested here. They're going to be stakeholders here. So I think, you know, we're really fortunate that, that they do have the interest and want to do this project.
And I agree. And, and that's good for them. I want to make sure it's all good for us.
Yeah.
We can't turn away development, you know, we, we wouldn't stop somebody from, just because we have a, two shoe stores. We wouldn't stop a third shoe store from coming in. And I, I think.
But John, we don't have any shoe stores. They're all up at the plazas and the thing that Jeff's saying.
I'm just using that as analogy, Rich. I'm not saying that. But I don't want to stop development.
Let's just get into common council.
Well, I mean, we still, I, I mean, I had several more questions. I didn't want to, I don't want to grill anyone, but, you know, I didn't, I want to make sure the opportunity for the general public to ask questions at the forum. But I did have a couple more questions if we could still ask a few questions of Andy and Jeremy and Tim.
Go ahead, Jess.
Okay. So how many people do you anticipate to live there? I just did a little simple math. You have two studio apartments, 23 one-bedroom apartments, 14 two-bedroom apartments. I'm ballparking around 100 people living there with 88 parking spots. And I, I don't know how that's going to fly in a neighborhood that's already congested. What's your ballpark figure?
In, in terms of parking, Jessica, typically multifamily developments are one and a half cars per unit. So I think Jeremy was spot on with the 88 parking spaces. So if I do what 39 times one and a half, you're around 50, 55. It's a little bit late, but that's my back of the napkin math. And 100 families seems a bit high. I, again, simple math, studios, you can only fit one individual in each studio. Same with the one beds and then, you know, your two beds. Typically it's two to three. So 25, 28, you're probably around the 50 to 60 range.
What threw me was the, was the remark of, you know, a family of four being 45,000.
It's a possibility, yeah.
So I'm thinking, I would, in my mind, I never thought a family of four would be living in a two-bedroom apartment. But when those numbers were out there, I, you know, I kind of went on the high side, so.
But Jessica, that's based upon their eligibility to be in there. That doesn't mean they're going to be fours. I thought there's going to be many fours in there. I, I think it's probably going to be two, a husband and a wife and a young child.
Yep. I just, I know the neighborhood is congested. I know nights like last night when the snowball has come through, people park at the school. There's the church around the corner that uses that parking on Sundays. You know, it's, it's a huge use in the neighborhood for parking. And I, I know that can be kind of granular, but. You know, just certain things like that can have a huge impact on everyone who lives there. That intersection is very challenging. So you've got traffic flows as well as parking, I think, can be, you know, challenging and just trying to get a better sense of what's going to happen for those of us who live here. And that's our daily commute every day.
Yeah. Understood.
So, and the question for Jeremy with regard to increasing with traffic. If you're going to move the school sites and cut down the number of schools, what is that going to do with the traffic to the other schools?
Well, as I think I said with North Hornell, it's going to be unchanged because nobody's moving to North Hornell. So, so that, that's a mess now. It'll, it'll remain a mess if you, if everyone has dropped off kids over there. I'm joking. No, it is something we, we are, we are working on, but, but this move, this move does not impact, does not impact that traffic pattern. In the intermediate school, there, there definitely would be more people that are converging down in that area. So what, I mean, we're, we're looking at the, the drop-off, where the buses drop off and where, where parents drop off. Not only the logistics of that and the physical layout, but also the, the scheduling of it all. And, and some things can be simple is, is really staggering the, the arrival for, of parents and buses. But the other thing that, that, and I mentioned, I can't remember who asked the question. But the number of buses that we're going to have to use, especially for the intermediate school, that'll be a standalone bus run. Just, just for those grades two, two through sixth grade. And because of that, we're not going to have to use as many buses. We, so we, we're not going to have 10 or 11 buses in a bus stop. So it, by, by doing, kind of putting this all together and some of the logistics together. Our goal is to completely separate buses and, and parents that are, that are dropping off. So they're completely two separate locations to, to avoid, you know, massive issues with, with congestion. And we're also working with our architect on, what is that, 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 the, I can't remember the, how they, what they, there's a technical architect term for. How long the path is for, for, for cars that, that drop off. So we're working through that to make sure that it's as, it's as seamless as possible. But there's, there's no doubt about it. Schools at arrival and dismissal are not the place that you want to be driving around. As you know, that in the bright area too.
Oh, yes.
Jeremy, just, just add on to that. And as a father of four. It, it's been a logistical nightmare even at North Cornell parking and things like that. If there's any way to school the line to keep going through like they do down south. I know I've been down there. My sisters live there. They, they move through the line. There's a, there's a problem here where everyone wants to congest. And you know Bryant School, they're halfway into Terry Street rather than pulling up. So maybe the educational level needs to be done because there is a really legitimate worry about moving Bryant School students. To intermediate, maybe not for me anymore because finally my kids are all going to be in one school someday, hopefully. But it, it's tough. It really is tough. And I think the multi-families have been left out of the equation. So I mean, just, just food for thought.
Jeremy? Joe Pelch, where do you anticipate the pickup and drop-off area is going to be in the east side? Like down towards this old sunset. I'm assuming they're going to be bused to the middle school, right?
Well, I mean, we already have pickup spots in all those different areas. So.
Oh, you know, okay.
We do. We, you know, just, they, they wouldn't have been picked up to go to Bryant that, you know, we have, we have kids in, that live in those neighborhoods that are bused to North Hornell. That are, that are bused to.
The place.
It's already in place. Yeah. The bus stop, the bus stops likely will not, the, the physical locations where they are likely won't change. It's just who gets on though, who gets out at those bus stops.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy, you had made a remark at the meeting that, you know, funding for things that break should the school close down. So I guess my question is, if the voters overwhelmingly reject this proposal. Would there be opportunity to reevaluate the closure of the school so that that would remain a school and funding would remain open? I mean, that would be best reflected if the community really comes out in droves and says, no, we don't want this. Would that be caused to reevaluate the closure?
I mean, I, I think you have to look at it from the, so we look at this from, from two facets. One is the educational facet of it and then the, the financial facet of it. From, from our perspective, both, both, both sides of this point to it's, it's, it's the wiser thing educationally. And it's a wiser thing financially to, to close, to close this building at, at some point. The reality is, is it, it comes at a cost. And, you know, if, if, if the community overwhelmingly is okay with spending more money. And impacting the, the taxes more, of, of course, there's, there's conversation for that. But I, I wouldn't be doing my job if I wasn't, if I wasn't presenting and I wasn't going through this process with the school board. And the school board wouldn't be doing their job if they weren't going through the same process that, that we went through over the last three years to get to this point. And like I said, I can't speak for the school board, you know, this, so that, I guess, I don't want to, I don't want to overstep that. That would, that'd be a question that we, we would have to bring back to the, to the school, school board for conversation. But like I said, from, from both educationally and, and financially. It is, it is our belief that this is the, that is the wise move to, to do.
Thank you. And I have just one last question. Andy, I just was wondering if you know, property tax-wise and your past projects that you've converted like schools to apartments. One of the questions I received from one of our constituents is the concern about the assessed value of their home. You know, one of the things when you, you buy a home in this area like myself, it's great for families to buy a house like this. Because you think I can walk right across the street, bring, you know, little Johnny to school. I'm wondering if you've noticed or if there's, if you could provide maybe even the past projects to be able to look at. What schools you've converted to housing and how that impacts the assessed value of the houses surrounding that area.
Oh, yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. I, one thing I can say for sure is that it. It's a positive impact. It, in all honesty, and I have, I can find, I do know there's some studies on this. I can look for that and share that information. The, the fact is that what you'd be comparing it to is your house sitting next to a school that's going to sit potentially vacant for 10 plus years or more. Whoever, you know, who knows how long versus a, a building that's, you know, thriving and, and has families living there. And, and is owned and managed professionally. And, and as the mayor said, for us, it's about long-term value. So we're committed to doing this and owning it for the long term. We don't ever develop and then just flip or sell. That's not our business model. So we're committed to it, to the long term. And, and that's what creates value for us, obviously, but for the community as well, because that's a good thing.
Yeah.
He's laughing.
Yeah, no, not it, you guys.
So I'll be, I will look for the study and the information I have and I'd be happy to share that with you, Jessica. And, and honestly, I think it's a positive. So.
I appreciate that. And, you know, forward that on to the folks that asked me. I really, really appreciate that.
Hey, I don't want to keep you, you guys all night. And I, and I do appreciate you, you know, staying and, you know, working overtime tonight and attending both meetings. But Jeremy, you know, on a fiscal side of things. Have you given any thought to, you know, the, the state of, or the fiscal condition of New York State as it is right now? And, and I sure, I'm sure you have, as it relates to. School funding next year or not, you know, not the, not the fiscal year we're going in, but you know, two years out, three years out. You know, as you know, you know, the governor in his draft executive budget, I think, is intending on appropriating 2.1 billion more dollars. The school districts, but it's very reliant on CARES Act money. Are, has there been any talk or is there any concern of another, a potential gap elimination adjustment down the road? And, you know, for those of you who don't remember, this is back in 2010, 2011. To make up a shortfall in the state budget, there was a formula spread across all school districts and everyone basically got a haircut. Is there any talk or is there any concern of that happening? And, and if so, how, how does this dovetail, you know, this project?
So haircut's an interesting way to, way to think about that. So I guess we'll, I'll start with this way. Hornell City School District is very fortunate in, in many ways. And that we, we receive a lot of our funding from, from the state. That's great when things are going well for the state. It's not so great when we're, when things aren't going so well. So, you know, the mayor was asking about, you know, have we thought about this long-term? And absolutely we've thought about this long-term. I, I was, I was a school leader during the last recession. And experienced that front-hand in terms of how, how things played out and how things worked from, from state, from federal and state, and then local funding. And, and really the, here, here's the reality. What we're experiencing right now, you know, the causes are very different. You know, we have a pandemic that's causing this now. And then, you know, a decade ago, we, we had a recession and crashed the stock market that, that created that. But if you look at what's actually happening in terms of municipal funding, it's, there were parallels. We're, we're, we're in the exact same situation. You know, we, we, we received cuts in state funding. That happened last year. So there were significant cuts in, in state funding for, for schools. Those, those cuts were substituted by the CARES Act last year. So, so, you know, we had our, our foundation funding, which is the, the primary source of our state funding was flat. So that, that remained the same. It was removed, it was reduced by over $700,000. And it was $705,000, which is the exact same amount that the CARES Act was that supported. So it was, we, we had money that was taken from us and federal money was, was, was put back in. Problem with that is that federal money only lasts for, in that particular case, only lasts for a year. I know full well that we're not going to get, and we saw it here even with our, with our state aid this year. The, the, the state government is not going to put that $705,000 back. What they did is they took more money away. For, for this particular year. And it's being substituted by more. and it's being substituted by more federal money, you know, so we we received in this last stimulus package that that was passed a little over $2 million, 2.1 million in 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 federal money. That federal money is is used to fill some holes, but it's given to us over multiple years. And the money was taken away all in this year, but we have this, but you know, that we that that 2.1 that that is substituted was 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 taken all at once, where we then have to use this these funds for for multiple years. The exact same thing happened, you know, eight, 10 years ago. The state reduced the budget, was filled with, at that point, it was called ERA funds, but it was same type of thing, federal money, federal stimulus money that that came and kind of filled the hole. That money only lasted two years and then what, when those when those dollars ran out, there's a cliff. There's there's a massive cliff because the the state government cannot backfill what they've taken away. Whether they can't or they won't, it doesn't matter, it doesn't happen at the end of the day, so we are anticipating this, the impact of this pandemic to be multiple years. You know, we're we're living through it currently, as is the city government, but but we expect that from from municipal funding that this will be, you know, likely more of a five year type of a type of an issue, that's that's where we were a decade ago. It took a long time for that gap elimination to disappear and to get back to a place where you were level level funding when it all started. So you so you ask, how does how does this situation impact us? I see this being the ability to impact us greatly from the from the from the onset that we're ahead of it. You know, what what, like, I I pride our board and and in our in our office and our administrative team here, I'm really trying to be ahead of the curve from as much as we possibly can, even if it's five minutes ahead, we want to be at least a little bit ahead of ahead of things. And, you know, the 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 because we 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 had a lot of this this thinking in in place, the planning in place and this deal that 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 came when it did, I I think we we feel we feel very fortunate that that's coming because we would rather be in the driver's seat in terms of making plans and adjusting our 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 district to support what we see is our our, you know, the declining enrollment and and to kind of fulfill this plan rather than to have the finances completely drive it, you know, we are, we are able to do this in in a in a in a pretty orderly fashion. But but I I've been in other districts where the decisions were made mainly being, you know, because they they ultimately had to be made, but the timing didn't didn't work out well and you were kind of forced into that that type of situation because you you couldn't afford it otherwise. We want to be ahead of that situation, so, you know, we're able to plan from staffing, you know, we we've been able to make significant reductions in staffing over the last 12 years, over the last 12 months without cutting anybody. Because we've had this plan in place, we've been very careful about individuals that are leaving the district or or that are retiring and and planned retirements over the next couple of years so that we can, we can really gradually kind of tighten our belt without 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 anybody losing their job in the in the process and that that is our goal, so the more thoughtful we can be in this process, you know, I think the better all overall and the better we'll be able to weather the storm because we, you know, we we we've we're weathered this this pandemic, but the the financial repercussions that'll come on the backside of it will be lasting, at least for at least for the short term.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, anything else for Jeremy or Andy, if if not, one more.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Jeremy, do you know what the capacity of North Cornell and Bryant School are?
What the capacity is?
Yeah.
I couldn't tell you off the off the top of my head, I I can tell you that, you know, as as far as when architects design classroom spaces and that sort of thing, they they designed them for for 25 to 30 kids, our classes are not that big, I can tell you the class sizes that we'll have when it's all said and done will be in the average of of 20, you know, that's that's typically what we average for class sizes now. That will be unchanged moving forward into this other other piece, we are not, we are not trying to cram kids into like the, you know, the a sardine can in order to make them fit, I think, I think, go ahead.
What about square footage of each building? Just trying to figure out why you chose Bryant School over North Cornell.
In terms of square footage of the building, North Cornell, North Cornell is a larger school. That I I can't tell you the square footage off the top of my head, I I can look it up, but North Cornell is is a larger school, there's there's more green space there, there's there's, you know, our our transportation services there. There's there's more, I guess, you know, it's, you know, it just, it just made more sense when you looked at all the all the facilities that you had. Bryant Bryant School is is landlocked, the the from a from a logistical standpoint, I I've heard people that were talking about dropping kids off and picking them up, it's it's there's a lot of challenges that that are associated with that particular building that we don't have in other places. Because it was, it wasn't designed, it wasn't designed to be used the way that it's being used now. You know, Bryant Bryant School was a neighborhood school, it was, it was, you know, it's a school that was that primarily was used for walkers and because the district reconfigured to not have to not have it as as a kindergarten through through second grade school when you had other neighborhood schools, it it functionally, it does, it doesn't work as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Jeremy, Andy, Tim, I want to thank you for taking the time out tonight, I I think it's been very informative and I I think hopefully beneficial to everyone, so.
Yeah, John, I think and I would just say, you know, if there are questions, I know there'll be more questions that are out there, direct them our way, you know, like I said, we're we're we're, all this information that we're sharing is on our webpage, but but bring them our way, you know, I want to be as responsive as as we as we possibly can, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just second that and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for attending tonight, we appreciate the comments and we we were going to do our best to address everything, I really appreciate Joe's comment, we want to figure that out, so we'll definitely have some offline dialogue with with you, Mayor and and Jeremy and I will and I I recognize how important it is, I grew up in Elmira across from Grove Park and so I have great memories of being able to run across the street into the park and I know how important it is to have places like that as the young kids, so we want to figure that out and so, anyway, thank you, everyone, appreciate it and we look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay. All right, well, with that, we'll get into the meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Do I get overtime tonight, Mayor?
You do not, but thanks for the question.
He's already being paid too much, we need overtime.
Is there a motion to strip the salary of the city attorney? Look at all the hands go up.
I do have a question for Joe.
Yes.
When you made the comment, you know, in regards to the green space, were you were you speaking as a concerned resident or as our attorney?
I'm speaking as a concerned resident who grew up in the neighborhood, my wife grew up across the street, there's the old green space in that area and if we lose that playground, we're going to lose a lot of, we care about the quality of life, yeah.
But but you're making some statements that were more law related and I was just.
Well, I just said that what I was.
If it if it was law related, I'd hope you would have, you know, don't speak on behalf of the council unless you talk to us first.
No, but, John, what I was saying is that the the school is selling that land, they could keep a reservation in that in that deed to ensure that that is a green space.
So you were talking as a lawyer is what you're doing.
Not as the.
He is a lawyer. City attorney, I should say.
Not the city attorney, I'm talking as a citizen of the city or.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. I apologize if you took it any other way.
I did take it that way and I I, you know, we're, there's 10 members on the council, I don't know, you know, who agrees with it or who doesn't, but I'd rather have some counsel with you before, you know.
No, I was speaking as an old, as an old sixth warder.
All right.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Brown.
Motion by Jeff Brown, second by Jessica, any questions? Call the roll.
Poncello, I believe, has left.
Yeah, I think she got tired of waiting.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
Yeah.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shinnabarger?
Yes.
Carbone?
Yes.
Nine-Nine, Your Honor.
Thank you, I'll also accept the motion to approve the reports of officers. Motion by, motion by Jessica, second by Kevin Valentine. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
Yeah.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shinnabarger?
Yes.
Carbone?
Yes.
Nine-Nine, Your Honor.
Thank you, we have a pair of committee reports and audit is first.
Honorable John J. Buckley, Mayor, members of Common Council, ladies and gentlemen, Bill email by Audit Committee members, Jeff Brown, Jim Bassett, Richard Argentieri, Kevin Valentine, Audit Committee Chairman, John Carbone. Bill's audit approved, Common Council, $244,723.90. Community Development, $1,294.65. Payroll of $73,770.14 for a total audit of $319,788.69. Respectfully submitted, John Carbone, Chairman.
Thank you, John, and finance is up next, but Melissa's not with us anymore.
I can read it if you want.
Okay, go ahead, John.
To the honorable John J. Buckley, Mayor, members of Common Council, ladies and gentlemen, Finance Committee held a meeting at the main place and also had members via teleconference, Zoom. Committee members present were Dan Warner, Carbone, Cleveland, Chair Melissa Poncello, Shinnabarger and John Allison via Zoom, also President Mayor Buckley, City Chairman Michelle Smith, Mitch Cornish, Jeff Chief, Ed Murray, Chief Brzezinski. The meeting was called to order at 6:40 PM. Number one, we had each department head come in to discuss their preliminary budget numbers and for the committee to ask questions. Two, Mitch Cornish discussed the aging DPW equipment and some of his budgetary needs. He has tried to do more with less over the past year, has had a loss already of several employees due to retirements or leaving this year. Is the department is down to less than 15 people. Spoke about chips funding and how that is down. Those funds are used primarily to pave our 205 streets that we have in Hornell. Funds cannot be used for the same street within a 10 year period. Mitch also spoke about some capital needs for equipment and looking for grants to help with any of these to help with any of these needs. Chief Murray spoke on his budget for the upcoming year. The police department is good, equipment is good, they have assigned one of the department new vehicles to each shift. This way, the same group is utilizing, I think that's supposed to be not utilizing the same vehicle. This helps for maintenance and care of the vehicle, the police department is also down two people. Recent retirement officer Lenahan and they'll be looking to hire for Lenahan's replacement. Chief Brzezinski spoke regarding his budget, they also have folks retiring and will be in need to replace those folks. Chief has some aging equipment issues, ambulances with lots of miles and trying to keep all equipment in good working order. Our department with the ambulance calls not only covers the city of Hornell, but also many surrounding communities. They have worked to keep everything going, especially with COVID and has done a great job of keeping the fire department staff healthy during this very uncertain time. Each department had spoke about their work to keep any overtime to a minimum. There have been times when it has been necessary to keep the appropriate number of staff on a shift for safety or due to unforeseen circumstances, a water main break or snowstorm. Each is keeping a close eye to do what their department can do to mitigate overtime. Motion to adjourn was made at 8:23 by Dan, seconded by Jessica. Respectfully submitted, Melissa Poncello, Chairwoman.
Thank you, John, for reading both those reports, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Jessica, second by?
Jeff Brown.
Second by Jeff Brown, any questions on the reports, if not, call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shinnabarger?
Yes.
And Carbone?
Yes.
Nine-Nine, Your Honor.
Thank you, that brings us to the resolution portion of the meeting and the first resolution has to do with AIM funding.
Whereas the city, state and nation are in the midst of a pandemic which has increased responsibility to essential city services and whereas through the use of executive orders in 2020, the governor essentially shut down much of the economy in the state and whereas the economic shutdown resulted in a substantial decline in vital revenue streams such as sales tax and whereas in addition to sales tax, cities rely on New York State AIM funding to provide essential services to residents such as water, work, public works, police, fire and ambulance. And whereas the governor is proposing to cut AIM funding to cities across the state and whereas the city of Hornell would lose $244,668 in vital AIM funding under the governor's proposal and whereas said cuts have a debilitating effect on the city could force layoffs and severely compromise the ability to deliver essential services that residents expect, need and rely on. Now be it resolved that the Mayor, Chamberlain and Common Council urge the governor to have AIM funding be fully restored in this current fiscal year and the next.
If you missy, is there a motion? Motion by John Carbone, second by Dan Warner. So, you know, th- these are some of the things that we've been talking about, especially with the Finance Committee. I I did get a copy of the governor's draft budget and there's there's cuts across across the state, every every city is is getting cut in the budget that he has right now. Now, I I've said this before and it still holds true that the governor is basically in a holding pattern, waiting on the feds to provide stimulus to to the state and then he's going to decide what these cuts will will actually look like, the governor is basing these numbers off from a projected a minimum of $6 billion from the feds, he's asking for 15 billion. He's basing this off of what he considers the worst case scenario of 6 billion. I don't know what that number is going to be, the stimulus package coming out of Washington started at $1.9 trillion. Will will that end up passing, I I doubt it, it'll probably in all likelihood be something smaller. What that translates to New York State is anyone's guess, you know, could could it be, you know, in the in the nine or 10 billion dollar range? Maybe, but but we don't know and talking to our state reps and talking to our federal reps, they they don't know, nothing's been yet, but one thing is for sure that whatever happens isn't going to happen and probably until you know, the second or third week in March, so what does that mean for us? That means we're in limbo, we don't know what our budget is going to look like because the feds haven't made up their mind and the state hasn't made up their mind and we rely on AIM funding, you know, we get approximately one and a half million dollars in AIM funding every year, it's just, it's just a hair under that. So, you know, any significant cut to that really negatively impacts a city and what we can do and the services we can provide. We've got a lot of holes to fill, we've got, you know, we've got a fire department that we're, that we've got retirements, we've got DPW, we've got police. You know, we've got a lot of holes we need to fill, but you know, in order to to do that, we need to know where we are fiscally, so, you know, like I said, we're in a holding pattern right now. I think every, you know, and it shouldn't just be, you know, the mayors and councils around the state, you know, residents should get involved, residents should call the governor. You know, ultimately, you know, those services that the city provides in cities across the state and villages across the state. That has a a direct impact on each and every resident, you know, when you turn on the faucet or you flush the toilet or you pick up the phone to call the police or the fire department or an ambulance, that's the cities and villages that provide it, that's, you know, your your house is on fire, you're not calling Albany, you're calling the city. That's, you know, your, your house is on fire. You're not calling Albany. You're, you're calling the city. You know, if, if, all of a sudden you don't, your water's dirty or your, your sewer is backed up. You're not calling Albany. You're not calling Washington, D.C. You're calling the city. We are the tip of the spear. And, and I'm asking every council member to vote for this, and I'm also asking you to write the governor individually. And, and residents need to get involved too, because this is going to have a devastating impact if this stands. Uh, we talked, we talked to the superintendent earlier, Jeremy Plati, about, you know, down the road and, and how COVID has a lasting impact. Well, i- it does. And this isn't a hole that we're going to dig out, you know, in, in a month, in a year. We're in two years. This is going to be, you know, it's going to take time to crawl back from this. And if the governor cuts, uh, you know, basically what it amounts to a quarter million dollars out of our budget, that is a huge hole to fill, and there's not a whole lot of good answers to do it right now. So that's why it's so important for everyone to band together and get this governor to turn it around and fulfill the promises that he made and fund cities fully. With that, are there any, any questions before we call the roll? I know that's a mouth. Okay, we have the motions, Missy?
Yes, we do.
All the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
I'm sorry, you guys. I, I am at work, so I'm sorry if I'm far away. Um, so yes, fifteen. Before I say yes, because I urged the governor to do the right thing. Fifteen for Biden's proposal would resolve it all, but we should also have a second resolution to push our Congressman Tom Reed to pass that COVID relief bill, which is three hundred and fifty billion. And I believe if anyone's paying attention, and I think there's a hundred and fifty earmarked for small communities like us and counties. So yeah, I, I am, yes, all the way. But I, I also think we got to hit it from all directions, guys. This isn't a team, this isn't a team game. This is Hornell, New York. And my answer is yes, but I also think we should have a resolution for Mr. Reed to do the right thing for us. Help us push that COVID relief plan.
Rich, I'm not exactly sure what you're even talking about. Congressman Reed and Senator Schumer have been on the same page uh, pushing stimulus for New York State, the, the entire.
Three hundred and fifty COVID relief. There's not one person in that Congress that's passed it yet, other than the Democrats. There's a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and fifty billion earmarked for small municipalities and, and counties.
Mayor, we're going to move the first question, and if he wants to waive the agenda, we have to vote on waiving the agenda. We got to move this down.
Yeah, the. My answer is yes. Urged the governor to do the right thing, but also urged our congressman.
Yeah.
Warner, you're a, a yes, Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shinnibarger?
Yeah.
Carbone?
Yes.
Nine-Nine, Your Honor.
Now, if he wants to waive the agenda to propose a resolution, we need a motion.
Yeah, it, uh, you know, I, I just, I just want, one point of clarity, you know, and I don't want to turn this into a civics lesson, but the, the time to have a conversation and the time to debate is after we have the motions. Uh, during roll call, it's just roll call. That's, that's when you say, you know, yea or nay or yes or no. So just, you know, going forward, you know, just keep that in the back of your minds. I know most of you know that, but let's, uh, let's try to practice that.
Is Rich asking to waive the agenda? Rich?
No, I'm not at all. We always take the motions before the comments. We always take the motions before the comments. My comment was, we should also ask our Congress, our congressman to help us out with the COVID relief. There's money earmarked for municipalities like us. Corning, Hornell, it's out there. So, so we can attack the governor all day long, because I believe that needs to be done. But we should also get help from the other side. John, it's the same thing all day long, man. Same thing. You know, we have to work for the city, not for the team.
And I'm out. Rich, I, I don't know what team you're, you're playing for, but I'm, I'm on Team Hornell, and I'm pretty sure most of the council is as well. And I can also tell you, having had discussions with Senator Reeves, I'm sorry, but I'm talking. Having conversations, multiple conversations with Congress, Reeves' office. You know what? You're out of order, Rich. You're out of order. I don't, I don't know what you're talking about. Do you even know what you're talking about?
Bang the gavel on you. Bang the gavel.
Cause I'm having, cause I'm the one having conversations with Senator Schumer's office. I was on the phone with them for forty minutes.
Senator Schumer is of, of the minority now, and the money that you're going to get is from Joe Biden's administration. Not from Senator Schumer. He's of the minority.
No, no, he, he's not actually. Senator Schumer is the majority leader, Rich.
And you know what? And you know also that, okay, all right, we can do that offline. I'm just telling you guys. I agree with urging the governor to do the right thing. I also plead with you guys to have Congress do the right thing, our congressman to do the right thing as well.
Can we please move this along? I, I, please.
I agree.
Or I'm going to have to leave.
I was just going to say that. Do we have another resolution on?
We, we do. The next resolution is the FEMA grant.
Whereas a budget amendment is necessary to reflect an increase due to a FEMA grant received to purchase air packs. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hornell, New York that the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one City of Hornell budget now reflects the following adjustments. Increased revenue, A four three eight nine, federal aid, public safety by one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and ninety-five cents. And increased expenditure, A three four one zero point two one zero, fire department equipment by one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and ninety-five cents.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Jim, second by Kevin. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
Yeah.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yeah.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shinnibarger?
Yes.
Carbone?
Thanks.
Nine-Nine, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next resolution has to do with the Elks donation.
Whereas a budget amendment is necessary to reflect an increase donation from the Hornell Elks Club received for COVID P P E. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Hornell, New York that the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Hornell, City of Hornell budget now reflects the following adjustments. Increased revenue, A two seven zero five, Gibson donations by five thousand, five hundred dollars. And increased expenditure, four five four zero point four one zero, ambulance materials and supplies by five thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion? Motion by Jessica. Second by John.
Brown.
Was that Jess and John Allison?
Jess and John Allison, yes. So we want to thank the Elks for their generous donation. If there, anyone have any questions on that? If not, call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentieri?
Yeah.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Bassage?
Yes.
Shinnibarger?
Yes.
Carbone? Nine-Nine, Your Honor.
Thank you. And the next resolution is the Police Reform Plan.
Whereas Governor Andrew Cuomo issued Executive Order two oh three on June twelfth, twenty twenty. And whereas Executive Order two oh three requires local governments to review and develop a plan to improve police force strategies, policies, procedures, practices. And whereas Governor Cuomo provided no funding plans for implementation. And whereas failure to comply with Executive Order two oh three may result in the reduction of state aid. And whereas the City of Hornell has a police department with twenty sworn officers. And where the City of Hornell partnered with Steuben County Sheriff's Office to conduct plan development on a countywide basis. Whereas outreach was conducted to gain input for the plan from one hundred and ten stakeholders representing sixty organizations, as well as from surveys to the stakeholders, general public, arrested persons, and law enforcement officers. And whereas the input received from the community survey in indicted wide support for the Hornell Police Department and identified opportunities for improvement. And whereas a draft plan was released on November sixth, twenty twenty for public comment as required by Executive Order two oh three. And whereas numerous comments were received from the public and were considered. And whereas the final plan was submitted to the Hornell City Council on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas the implementation of the final plan will be dependent upon available resources. Now therefore, the Hornell City Council hereby ratifies the Final City of Hornell Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Plan dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Missy. Well done. Is there a motion? Motion by Kevin Valentine, second by John Allison. And we are joined by, I think, Chief Smith still, or is Chief Murray still with us? Where is he?
He's here. He's here.
He is here. Oh, there he are. I'm sorry, looking at the wrong box. So Chief is, uh, going to give us a little presentation on the, on, on the plan. And, and I, and I do want to congratulate you, Chief, and, and Captain Sexsmith, who also had input on this. Uh, there was a lot of hard work that went into this, uh, over, uh, you know, quite a bit of time. And, uh, you know, I'll, I'll let you touch base on, uh, you know, the county's involvement and, uh, uh, you know, in the, the help the City of Corning provided as well, Chief. And go ahead and walk the council through it.
Okay, thank you, John. Um, I, I sent out a packet to everybody on their email, and hopefully everybody received it and had, had an opportunity to go over it. Um, I've got a really quick, uh, PowerPoint, and I'm going to go through it kind of quick and go through each point of, of our, of our reform, uh, plan with you. Missy, can you allow us to have access now?
Hit share screen down here on the screen.
Which one?
Yep, share.
Okay.
She disabled that one. Okay, hold on.
Okay.
All right, turn this on. Let's try that again. All right, so, okay, and then try to hit share screen again. Um, and then click this one. Please want to share that one.
Well, they're figuring that out, Mayor. I don't have that in my packet. Is, and I did get the email. Is this something we're voting on here? Cause I'm not quite sure what we're talking about.
Yes, it's to adopt the reform plan. It was, uh, uh, sent out to all the aldermen in the email to review it.
Which I got.
Yeah.
This is just a shorter version of it.
This is a shorter version. I'm just going to go through, uh, my PowerPoint.
Jeff's question was, we didn't have the resolution in our packet, and it's not on our agenda. So I don't know if we have to, just for the.
Oh, no, that was, Missy, you sent that out, uh, uh, Friday, I believe, right?
I did. I believe I sent it out on Friday, too.
Yeah, I, I got, uh.
I got it as well.
It was an.
The agenda and the resolution.
It was via email. It was not in your packet.
Okay. I know I read it, but I didn't know, didn't know where it was.
Okay.
It was Resolution twenty-one dash thirteen.
Correct.
Correct. We should have it.
Can everyone see, can view what I'm looking at?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, the Hornell Police Reform Reivivization Plan, and we've been working on this, like I said, for, for quite a while. And I, I took this picture and I kind of put it in, in the front page of it. And that's actually, uh, the granddaughter of a friend of mine, Tyrone Wright. And I don't know if any of you remember Tyrone. He, uh, died at a much too, too young age. He died in a, in a tragic car accident. And, uh, uh, I remember Tyrone, he, he, uh, wanted to, uh, to actually become a police officer. And we used to talk about it when, when, in his younger days. So, um, he was always somebody that kind of hung out at the police department. And I became, I became good friends with him. So this is actually his, his granddaughter. Uh, it's Marcina Harmison's. Uh, many of you will know her. This, this would be her great, her, uh, great granddaughter. So we took the picture together, uh, at the, after the Black Lives Rally meeting that we had. Um, then I just put a, a little forbearance in there. Before we can police ourselves, we must first police ourselves. We must first police ourselves to treat all others as children of God. The preamble on this, following the death of George Floyd on May, on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, I along with Mayor Buckley, were invited by persons protesting the actions of the police and the death of Mr. George Floyd to peacefully march with them through the main street of the city. As we marched and later assembled for speeches on Municipal Lot Four, it became clear that a segment of our population have suffered under our current justice system. Although they spoke well of our department, they cited many examples of injustices over the years that define their current frustration with law enforcement in general. Most of the crowd are considered to be friends, peers, and many I have grown up with and gone to school with and socialized throughout the years. Unique to other communities, our assembly concluded with a peaceful hike to our police fire station where we enjoyed lunch and cold drinks together. Hearing the hurt that they voiced, resigned me to listen to this population of our citizens and reform the Hornell Police Department to better, more equally and fairly serve these citizens. To this same end, on June twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Cuomo signed an executive order requiring each local government in the state to adopt a policing reform plan by April first, twenty twenty-one. With both focuses on local concerns as well as the state mandated ones, we have developed the following plan for police reform and reinvention for the City of Hornell Police Department. It is recognized by the administrative body of our department that this plan is by no means an end to itself, but rather a launching pad to continue an open dialogue with all of our citizens, having a stated goal to affect additional changes as they arise. Uh, the governor's plan, um, the, in, in conjunction with this, the governor laid out his plan and, and, and concising it, basically, each local government entity, which has a police agency operating with police officers defined under one twenty of the criminal procedure law, must perform a comprehensive review of current police force deployments, strategies, policies, procedures, and practices, and develop a plan to improv- improvise such deployment strategy, policies, and procedures and practices for the purposes of addressing the particular needs of the community served by such police agency and promote community engagement to foster trust, fairness, and legitimacy, and to address any racial bias and disproportionate policing of communities of color. Each executive, each chief executive of such local government, which would be the mayor, shall convene the head of the local police agency and stakeholders in the community to develop such a plan, which shall consider evidence-based policing strategies, including when not limited to the use of force policies, prejudicial justices, any studies addressing systematic racial bias or racial justice in policing, implement of bias awareness training, de-escalation training and practices, law enforcement assisted diversity programs, restor- restorative justice practices, community-based outreach and conflict resolution, problem-oriented policing, hotspots, policing focus deterrence, crime prevention through environmental design, violence prevention, and reduction invention, model policies and guidelines prom- promulgated by the New York State Municipal Police Training Council and standards promulgated by the New York State Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. The political subdivision in coordination with its police agency must consult with stakeholders, including when not limited to members, membership and leadership of the local police department, members of the community with emphasis in areas with high numbers of police and community interaction, interested nonprofit and faith-based community groups, the local office of the district attorney, the local public defender, and local elected officials, and create a plan to adopt and implement the recommendations resulting from its review and consultation, including any modifications, modernizations, and innovations to its policing deployments, strategies, policies, procedures, and practices tailored to the specific needs of the community and general promotion of improved police agency and community relationships based on trust, fairness, accountability, and transparency, and would seek to reduce any racial disparities in policing. Such plans shall be offered for community comment to all citizens in locality, and after consideration of such comments, shall be presented to the local legislative body. in such political subdivision, which shall ratify or adopt such plan by local law or resolution as appropriate, no later than April first, twenty twenty one. And such local government shall transmit a certification to the director of the division of the budget to affirm that such process has been complied with, and such local law or resolution has been adopted. And the director of the division of the budget shall be authorized to condition receipt of future appropriated state and federal funds upon filing of such certification, which local government would otherwise be eligible. And the director is authorized to seek the support and assistance of any state agency in order to effectuate these purposes. To better assess our services and identify areas of potential change, we first met with local stakeholders and had two meetings with these stakeholders and discussed in person areas of concern. In addition to this, we collaborated with the Steuben County Sheriff's Department, City of Corning, and other agencies and towns within Steuben County to obtain both participation and feedback from citizens throughout the county, including Hornell. Over the past several months, we conducted listening sessions for identified stakeholders and the general public. The results of these meetings, surveys, and listening groups, in addition to the New York State mandated changes, led to the following reform plan. The first section of our reform plan identifies and addresses those areas specifically mandated by the governor's executive order two oh three. The following section identifies and addresses concerns brought to us through our local meetings and feedbacks collected from the joint listening sessions in service. Our proposed plan was placed on the city's and department's Facebook pages as well as city's homepage for the purpose of obtaining additional feedback and suggestions from the public on how we might better address changes or additional concerns that were not addressed in the plan. And this was placed on our plan from January eighth, twenty twenty through, that should be twenty twenty one through January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. A special account was provided to allow for all comments, either anonymously or for those wishing a response. Although comments were sparse, those received were positive in nature and supportive of our plan. With this feedback, along with telephone calls and discussions with public stakeholders that I've had, our final plan was materialized for presentation to Mayor John Buckley and all members of the common council for possible ratification at this particular meeting in February twenty twenty one. This final plan is listed in the appendix of this report. It's actually, I've got it listed as the next page. But the first part of the reform package talks about the state mandated changes. We did those first. The first one is civil penalties for filing false reports on members of a protected class. And basically, a description of it establishes penalties for falsely summoning a police officer when there's no reason to believe a crime, offense, or threat has been committed involving a member of a protected class. We've conducted in-service training in regards to this particular aspect. And that has been completed. The second mandate was require police officers to report the discharge of weapons. Requires police officers, a peace officers, whether on or off duty, who discharges his or her weapon under circumstances where a person could be struck by a bullet, to verbally report the incident within six hours and file a written report within forty eight hours. This has been written into the Hornell Police Department's policy and procedures for use of force. And we've done several in-service trainings highlighting this. The third mandate was require the reporting of police acts or omission or omission, omissions resulting in a person's death to the Office of Special Investigations. What this is, it establishes an off, the the state is established an office of special investigations within the Office of the Attorney General's Office, which will have investigative authority and criminal jurisdiction for all incidents involving the death of a person caused by an act or omission by a police officer or peace officer employed as a correctional officer or contracted by an education, public health, social service, parks, or housing agency. Where an investigation conducted that the death or matters relating to the death or investigation of the death involved a criminal conduct, the office will be empowered to prosecute any such alleged offenses. As far as the, this mandate goes, we've been contacted by the Attorney General's Office. And basically, we were told that they were going to, in the future, let us know exactly how how we're going to get this information to them and how their investigation is going to take place. So we're in compliance with it. We'll conduct in-service training and establish communication methods with the Attorney General's Office. But it's pending needed actions by the New York, by New York State as far as giving us the guidelines, as far as getting, getting the information to the Attorney General's Office and how they want us to coordinate with them in regards to those. The fourth one is ban chokeholds. The Eric Gardner Anti-Chokehold Act creates the crime of aggravated strangulation, making it a Class C felony, and establishes criminal penalties for police officers or peace officers who use a chokehold that causes a serious physical injury or death. So there's now a law in place that a police officer that uses a chokehold causes a serious injury or death. It is a crime for them to do so. We've conducted in-service training in regards to this. And we've updated our policy to restrict any chokeholds. Mandate five, require medical response for arrestees. Affirms affirms an individual's rights to medical and mental health attention while under arrest or otherwise in custody of a police officer or peace officer. They are to provide reasonable and good-faith medical assistance could result in cause of action against the officers, representative, or other entity. Again, we've, this is something that we've, we've been doing throughout the years, actually, but we've done in-service training recently to affirm this and make sure that the officers abide by this. Mandate six. Mandate six requires policing statistics to be reported to the Division of Criminal Justice Services. It requires courts to complete and publish data concerning arrests and court proceedings involving low-level offenses such as violations and traffic offenses. Such reports will include aggregate and anonymous and anonymized demographics, information such as race, ethics, and sex. The bill requires police departments to submit annual reports on arrest-related deaths to the Department of Criminal Justice Services as well as the governor and state legislative. We've already had policies in place that any deaths that would occur within police custody, we would, we would do that anyways. It's been in our policy for years. As far as the data that the court has to report, we will provide, we've actually provided data to the Hornell City Court and to the Department of Criminal Justice Services as required. So we will be talking to the city court, and we have, that they are required to to give that information as such. And again, it's something that, it's in the, it's in the works trying to get it. The court system to do it, it's out of our hands, but it should be completed by the first quarter of this year. Mandate seven provides that a person not under arrest or in the custody in the custody of a law enforcement officer has the right to record police activity to maintain custody and control of that recording and any property or instrument used by that person to record such activities. A person in custody or under arrest does not by that statute alone forfeit such right to record. And again, we've conducted in-service training to all of our officers in regard to this and outline that people have such right. Mandate eight provides the public access to personal records of police officers. And it repeals the Civil Rights Act of Law fifty eight, which had made all personal records used to evaluate the performance towards continuing employment or promotion of police officers, firefighters, or paramedics. Correction officers or peace officers, confidential, and not subject to inspection review without the individual's express written consent or a court order. This legislation also means that New York State's FOIL law subjecting any recording created in furtherance of a law enforcement discipline or action to disclosure. Under FOIL, the new FOIL provisions require specific sensitive personal information, including medical history, to be redacted from such records. We've notified Hornell City Court of this new law that the people have the right of such. And we've also, we've done a letter to the, to the, to our city attorney's office in regards to it. Those were the mandated changes that we did. After all our meetings, we also found that there were other changes that were important for, for community members. And we added these also as part of our police reform. They include, in training, we wanted to expand the de-escalation training. Review current de-escalation training and benchmarks for additional recommendations. And we now include de-escalation training to all personnel within, within the training period. And we do regular scenario trainings implementing the above. The targeted timelines for some of these, you'll see quarter four, quarter four, twenty twenty two, twenty two, and twenty two. It's to give us a little bit of time. These aren't, these particular things are not mandated. But, but they're what we're putting within our thing. And there's no doubt that we'll be able to, to implement that before that timeframe. But we just put that in there. Like I say, we do de-escalation training right now. All of our training, all of our officers have gone through it. And we plan to do some more extensive de-escalation training. Expand use of force training. Review current training by defensive tactics instructor groups for training recommendations. And recommendations for improved use of force training. It's something that we're constantly doing, but with the changes in laws, it's important for us. And we are throughout our training processes reinventing ways and recommendations of not using force as we, as we've done in the past. And again, explore usage of more, less than lethal uses of force. We've looked at a number of different less than lethal types of force that we utilize. And we hope to expand that at some of those. Some of those are a cost item, so it isn't always easy to just jump into them. Equality and social justice, diversity and increased candidate recruitment pools. Take proactive steps to increase diversity of the candidate pools. So newly hired officers better reflect community demographics. Encourage potential candidates to take advantage of preparatory or law enforcement trainings, non-lethal portions of the police academy certification. Conduct outreach. What we've done is we've conducted outreach with faith-based groups to increase interaction with youth and potential employees. And that's something that we plan on, on doing throughout, throughout this year. We also want to increase the social media advertisements. That's something the captain Sacksmith is going to work at to attract diverse candidates and raise awareness of available positions, civil service requirements, and availability of pre-employment police academies. We'll also continue the existing practicums that we have with Alfred State College. And these practicums, we bring in, we've brought in a lot of minority people to our practicums throughout the years. We do have a girl now that is actually doing one of our practics, practicums from Alfred Westus. And it's just a way of bringing them into the department. And hopefully, we'll be able to recruit from them. Provide civil service test training, provide civil service test training to prepare applicants for the entry-level examination. And we're partnering again with Sonny Corning and Alfred to offer assistance. Expand diversity and bias awareness training, expand diversity and bias awareness training to include marginalized populations such as low income, substance abuse disorders, minority, and LGBTQ communities, as well as training to recognize systemic racism. And again, by quarter, by quarter four of this year, we're going to require implicit bias awareness training for all the Hornell Police Officers. We have started some of it. I don't think everyone has gone through it at this point. But by, by quarter four, we will, we will have everyone through a bias awareness training program. Community relations, conduct public education on policing practices. One of these, this would include increasing the transparency of policing methods and governance by educating the public on these practices. And how we, how we plan on doing this is provide information over our website to encourage feedback on recommended actions. Continue outreach programs with Alfred State College and encourage outreach programs with youth and civic organizations. Community relations, strengthening customer service practices. Reinforce need for positive communications to better customer service and professional development training. Develop a quality assurance program to identify how citizens perceive the Hornell Police customer service. Develop communication for all, for all officers to examine and evaluate best service practices. Obtain feedback from both local and civic groups and, and Facebook accounts. We've set up a Facebook account in the, in the police department for this purpose. And we'll also look at conducting biannual community surveys, whereby we would go out into the community, do surveys, and get the, the results of those surveys back. And use those for strengthening our customer service in the future, what we do right, what we do wrong, what we need to be doing. The next one is community relates, under community relations is to establish and promote community programs to increase law enforcement visibility in the community. Develop and execute programs that bring law enforcement officers and citizens together in forums where they talk to one another, share thoughts, and promote interactions which support the building of possible relationships. Further promote the Department of Homeland Security's Grace Training, which we do. And stop the bleed training. Again, within our department, what we do, we're going to continue, we do crash training throughout, throughout not only within the city, but sometimes we're asked outside the city to do some crash training. And also to stop the bleeding training to city businesses and to citizens. We, we'd like to increase our bike patrols to include stop and talk for personnel, for personal interactions within citizens. So we're talking to what our bike officers, is when they're out there on their bicycles, don't just, don't just ride from point A to point B, but go through communities and actually talk to, to people within the community and get their input on what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, and bring that stuff back to us. And we'd like to host periodic community meetings to obtain feedback and suggestions for better services. And we started to do that, but unfortunately, COVID hit. And when it did, it made it, it makes it very difficult to, to, to do these community meetings. But we hope to get back on doing that in the near future. In regards to transparency and accountability, we'd like to have a personal review board and start, start panel to review personnel and ensure best practices in personnel. So all complaints that receive, are received by the Hornell Police, by, by, by the community about the Hornell Police Officers, complaints and actions there there will be reviewed monthly by the Board of Public Safety. So the Board of Public Safety is going to be the, the review board. And if we have complaints on a monthly basis, we will bring the complaints to the, to the board so that they can review any of the complaints. And we can look at expanding this. And we can look at expanding this board, on a yearly basis, we can look at it whether it needs, it needs additional people or whether the Board of Public Safety itself would, would suffice for it. The next one is to increase transparency of arrest activities and calls for services. Ensure citizens have access to appropriate police data and arrest activities via monthly report placed on the Hornell website and social media sites. Request for newspaper to list weekly calls for service activities. And we're going to ask the newspaper to do so, but again, we're going to, uh, uh, within quarter two, the captain's going to be working on it, and what we're going to be doing is, is on a monthly basis, on our Facebook page, we'll be doing a monthly report on, on, uh, debt and arrest activities for the public. And it'll include calls for services, case and arrest and use of force incidents, arrest by sex and race, area patrols, and community interactions. And again, we'll request local newspapers to report on police log activities. They do, they do now, uh, but I don't know if, if all of our activities are reported. Sometimes they just report the, the arrest activities and, and all of our activities aren't actually listed. So, I'm going to be talking to the newspaper about possibly, uh, listing more of our activities to let the public know what we're doing out there. Reduce personnel complaints. Identify key behaviors and causes that may drive citizens to complain about officers and, and incorporate these findings into training. What we're going to be doing is leverage field training officers, uh, which we've got four or five, uh, field training officers in the city of Hornell. And the fielding officers, uh, we're going to have them review complaints and determine a need on a monthly basis and, and focus on areas of change and, and talk to our training officers so that, uh, when we do get complaints, the complaints are, are, are looked at and that we, uh, we are taking actions if, if need be in changing our training. And again, establish a standard, a standard personnel complaint process. We have one now. We're, we're just looking to, to update it and make it a little bit more easier for people to, uh, to utilize and actually put one on, on the, on our Facebook page. Uh, the next one is increase transparency of use of force incidents and personal compliance. Ensure better and timely citizen access to use of force data and personal complaint incidents and outcomes. Modify current Hornell Police software systems to better collect and track the data. We would add annual report data fields in our current system. Unfortunately, when the current report system that we do have, it doesn't track a lot of the things that, uh, that, that people would, would like to see, such as, uh, uh, race and sex, that this doesn't give us an outlier of it. It would, it would really require us to get, uh, a better software system or a better recording system, which, which we'd be looking for in the future anyways, but it's something that we'll, we'll try to incorporate, but it's going to be a cost factor. Personal complaints and adjudications and use of force. Uh, transparency and accountability. The next one is descriptions or public job descriptions and annual performance appraisal process. Make job descriptions and performance processes more readily available to improve transparency. And we'll post job descriptions of the Hornell Police Department. In other words, what, what each one of us are doing, what the sergeant's doing, the investigator, the patrolman, what their jobs are, and, and what, how they're being appraised at the police department. And if you read the, the, uh, the original one that I did that sent to everybody, it has that in it, so that's going to be placed on our, on our Facebook page, and it kind of explains, uh, what, uh, the role of each, each of the, of the officers are. The next one is evaluate, uh, potential body camera program and assess the usefulness and cost of implementing a substantial body camera program. Conduct review of cost feasibility of such program. Uh, we are looking at it, at it now. One of the, one of the people that helped us with this program, uh, works at Corning Inc., and, uh, she was actually talking about the possibility of, uh, of, of, of them assisting, uh, the countywide with, with, uh, acquiring, uh, body, body worn cameras, which would be, you know, would be a great thing for us. But the biggest problem right now, uh, outside of, of, of that, and we, we're looking at grants all the time for it, but, uh, we, we just don't have the, the, the cost within the budget right now. So, uh, getting the body cameras is, is a great ideal. I, I would recommend it, but again, it depends on, on a funding source. Policies and procedures. Improve selection and promotion methods by requiring candidates to meet additional standards. And what this means is we, we basically want to, want the best standards for, for our people that we're hiring or, or getting promoted. Require candidates to meet additional criteria to help ensure a higher quality pool of candidates for new hires, lateral transfers, or promotions. Enhance selection methods for new hire lateral transfers and supervisor officers. Require a standardized, comprehensive background investigation, which we do now. We do, we do a thorough investigation with, with everybody that we're looking at. Uh, require a psychological exam, which, which we have been doing. Under the current civil service law, we can't actually do that until actually they're hired, so it's kind of backwards. But all the officers do, uh, take a psychological examination. And require a truth verification test for all new hires. That's also done as part of the, of the background. Initiate anonymous quality assurance feedback channels. Allow citizens and officers to submit feedback via website and social media to reduce the incidents of unsatisfactory or unlawful behavior. Establish a process for citizens, officers to leverage social media and the Hornell Police website to anonymously notify Hornell Police officials of unsatisfactory or unlawful behavior of personnel. Again, we're going, we're going to set up a site where, uh, people can come in there. They wouldn't have to give their names if they don't want to. But they can anonymously, uh, notify, uh, the department, which would come back to, to, to me, uh, of, of, of a situation where, where they had unsatisfactory, uh, uh, behavior, unlawful behavior by your police officers. So, we can, uh, at, at the, at, at the most, uh, recent moment that we'll be able to know about it and we can take action. The next one, a New York, New York State DCJS law enforcement accreditation. Assesses current policy procedures to determine areas of non-compliance of New York State DCJS law enforcement accreditation standards. What we plan on doing by the end of, uh, of the year is conduct a comprehensive review of all our current Hornell Police Department policies against the state level standards to identify gaps and attain New York State accreditation. Uh, we did have New York State accreditation. I think we were the only police agency, uh, I know we were the only one in the county that had it. But in this area, we were the only one that had it, and we kept it up to about three years ago when it just became on, um, the captain was spending so much time with that, it was taking him away from, from his regular job. So, we weren't able to, to, to keep it, but, uh, it, it is something that we've been looking at. We look at the policies and standards of the accreditation, and we, we try to keep our standards up to it regardless of whether or not we're actually accredited through them. We'd like to get back to being accredited, but again, it's, it's a matter of having the personnel to actually work on the folders and such to, to, to show our compliance. Collaboration with mental health agencies, um, this is a big one. We're always dealing with mental health, and we want to expand our crisis intervention training, which we've been slowly doing with our officers. We want to partner with Steuban County Mental Health to increase field use of mobile crisis unit. They do have a mobile crisis unit. However, it's, it's, it's tough to really get them out on scenes. But we want to partner with them as much as we can and utilize them with mental health situations and kind of take the police officer out of the, uh, we want to partner with county medical providers for mental health transition treatment and expand use of telemedicine providers in the medical health area. Again, we want to work with Steuban County Mental Health, uh, collaborate with the area providers for mental health, telemedicine, and that's out of the University of Rochester that we have. Thanks, Jen. Thank you. And want to collaborate with Steuban County Mental Health to conduct crisis intervention training, and that's they'll come in and, and work with our officers to give, uh, to give crisis intervention training and help our officers to deal with mental health. We're dealing with it more and more and more, so it's an, it's an important thing for us to, to keep looking at. Uh, improve awareness of mental health challenges of officers. Uh, and this is within our officers themselves, expand peer counseling programs and create emotional survival for law enforcement program for officers and families. And what we'd like to do, a-again, this is, this is at the end of, of, of this particular year if we can, is we'd like to train people to become peer counselors, uh, someone that, uh, that can talk to, to other officers that may be having issues and problems, and establish, uh, an annual family training session outlining how to recognize stress and to teach the effective strategies for managing such stress. And that is the, uh, that's the, the completion of what, uh, what we're going to be submitting, and that's, that, that's the plans that we want. And I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of people. Uh, I would first like to thank all the Hornell citizens that took their time to meet with my staff and myself to discuss the policing of their community. We had a tremendous open and positive dialogue centered on racial equality and justice. And although the onslaught of COVID nineteen has made it difficult, I hope to continue and expand upon these meetings in the future. I'd also like to thank, uh, all the citizens, local officials, police officers who took time to engage in the countywide Zoom meetings and surveys. I would like to thank Hornell Mayor John Buckley for his support to both our police department and to this reform process. I would like to thank Steuban County Jim Allard, Corning Police Chief Jeff Spalding, and Corning Incorporated's Dawn White for their work in organizing the countywide network of meetings and surveys central to many of our reformums. I would also like to thank the Hornell Police Captain Mike Sexsmith, who works hard to keep our policies, procedures, and trainings up to date and in line with both the best practices and state accreditation standards. And I'd also like to thank, uh, Jen McLaughlin, who helped me put this together and, and did all the typing, and, uh, she's actually here with me tonight, helping me, uh, helping me set this up so, so that it worked all right, and it seemed to. Thank you, Jen. Okay, and lastly, I would like to thank the members of our Hornell Police Department. Every day, our officers serve our community with professionalism, honor, and dedication. They often risk their own safety as they devote their careers in helping others and making Hornell a great place to call home. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. That was, that was very, uh, very detailed, and, uh, yeah, I know you know, a lot of time and effort and energy went into that. I, I really appreciate it. Uh, no, no easy task putting that all together. We do appreciate it. I, you know, I, I won't, you know, expand on it anymore. I think, uh, you know, we, we've talked about it some in the past, and, uh, you know, I kind of, Chief really hit on all the points, so. We do have the motions, I believe. Is there any comments or questions? No comments, questions? Missy, we do have the motions? You're still muted, but I can-
Yes, we do.
All right. If there's no questions, then, uh, please call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison? Argentary?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland? She here? Cleveland?
She was muted.
I've asked her to unmute.
Sorry about that.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yeah.
passage?
Yes.
Shina Barger, I know he had to leave, but in the chat, he said his vote is yes. Do I count that?
Well, you can put it in the record.
Okay.
I, I don't know that, I don't know that you can count it as a roll call vote, but you can have it in the record-
Okay.
-that did, uh,
Okay.
-that he did intend to vote in the affirmative.
Okay.
You got the numbers.
And Carbone? Carbone, you're, you're muted.
Yes.
That's eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. That concludes the resolution. We don't have any petitions, but we do have claims.
Now therefore be it resolved, that claims in the amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents as audited by the Audit Committee of the Common Council of the City of Hornell are approved and authorized paid as audited. Common Council, two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety cents. Community Development, one thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Payrolls, seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fourteen cents for a total of three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Thank you, Missy. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by John Allison, second by John Carbone. Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentary? Can we still have him? Argentary? Didn't hear him?
You got it.
Yes, okay. Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
passage?
Yes.
Carbone? Carbone?
Yes.
Eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. I do not have anything in the miscellaneous, so if there's nothing from the, further from the council, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Jeff Brown, second by Dan Warner. Questions? If not, call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Argentary?
Hang on.
Yeah.
Warner?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
passage?
Yes.
Carbone? That's eight eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time tonight. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.